Talk about now we're drifting off course trying to backtrack into what this place is gonna be. We don't know what this place is gonna be until that place is decided on. If that place is gonna be half the size, then what are we gonna do with the balance of the office space? Are they gonna try to jam in here still?
So let's make everybody happy. Let's figure out a way to build that. Make payments somewhere other than there. Hold meetings somewhere other than there. And keep this as a fire station. So that's what our, that's the nut we have to crack.
Basically, if that's what you'd like to do, what we would have to do is find another property in town in somewhere else. And build out those spaces.
Well.
The, the issue, like I stated before, or I started stating before, I don't think I finished my thought, but. The, the issue with having a sole person down here is they don't have support. So if like currently if Liliana has a problem with the customer or billing situation. Tomorrow her supervisor is close by and can help mitigate the issue.
And quite frankly, making that place look like an AMPM in Oakland is not an answer.
No.
No, it really isn't.
But if it is a water station, there will be staff here.
So, so if you want to.
It's just, just not water staff, we won't know how to, how to pay a bill, but we'll be able to.
Right.
We move a property from the building.
So there, so we have several issues, our biggest issue as usual is finances. There is very minimal funding or grant funding available for administrative offices of the district. So.
That, that's correct, very, very minimal, but.
So it would be either a grant or a loan or outright cash. We don't have outright cash. So it would be a loan. So not only would we be building that building, but we would be building another building. Or we'd be building that building hoping for the best and staying here until we can build another building.
The tariff was available for rent for two hundred fifty dollars a day.
So my, my suggestion and what I've been trying to lean towards is. If we build this building, we temporarily. And for a span of maybe say five years. Move to that building. Be able to build up reserves. Hopefully in the next five years, they start building out this commercial space next to us. Work out an agreement with the property owner. Build out a space that's big enough for a meeting room, that's big enough for the general manager, bookkeeping, uh, accounting actually.
Whatever, whatever you want upfront.
So basically all the, the front end accounting and management. Build a building downtown, which is where you guys wanted it sounds. Downtown to have those.
After we started to build this.
Well, like I was saying earlier, basically in five to ten years, we probably already have offices for the utilities anyway.
As it grows.
So if we build it out, that, the meeting room will always be a usable space for training. The fire department training ground down there, they can use that to teach classes. They can use it to, to have meetings for their, for their training.
We could host classes.
We could host classes for the fire department, we could host classes for utilities. We have the option to bring a lot of classes here for utilities that we can't afford to go to. But they would be happy to bring them here, but we don't have a room big enough to teach twenty to thirty students at a time.
Lots of training organizations would take advantage of it.
And if we have a space that we can do twenty to thirty students at a time, then we can get them here. That's why the San, city of San Luis gets so many classes, they have a huge cafeteria that they have classes in constantly.
Right.
So the, the cost to build out that space is fairly minimal.
But you're talking about a thousand square foot conference room. That's huge, that's the size of my house.
You should have conferences.
Well, if you look at the bottom half where the green sticker is, this room is basically the size of that bottom half.
So it's twice the size.
So.
And you're plus.
Like three times the class.
Three times the size.
Here, but.
And then they've got parks somewhere.
But we don't have, water is in really bad way. So they don't have a whole bunch of funds to throw around building, building. You know, as far as my concern with the water department, if we stayed here forever, then that's what the water department can afford. But we can't do that forever. If we build it out at the treatment plant, then the water or wastewater is gonna, is what really drives the size of that building. They're the ones that need most of that space. So they're gonna pay for most of that. So basically lighting, water, sewer and solid waste.
And take advantage of a large facility.
Would be essentially spreading the cost of thirteen hundreds per feet. So that's, that's pretty minimal for a new building. I agree, and I'm in favor of having an office downtown. I think that's the most advantageous thing for this community. It's right downtown, everybody can see it, I agree.
This would be an evolutionary step in that direction.
But we don't have funds for that.
Well, it would. Yeah, but you're talking five years, people driving through a neighborhood. It's just, it's just not right. It's not right. There's kids playing.
You know, I live on Mission Street and it's like a landing strip, so.
I know. And the neighborhoods are. And those people moved in there because they didn't wanna live in the landing strip.
The people in Mission, they want to live on a landing strip because most of them are the ones.
I'm just saying, they live on a dead, they live on a dead end. They have a certain expectation when you buy, when you buy a home in a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, well, and, and with that said, um, I have concerns about the pond, the public access. We got that forty foot strip of blacktop, these are my concerns about this space. Are we, are we fenced in around the ponds, public is coming down there to pay a bill?
So about, and that, in this particular scenario.
Cause they will come, they don't ACH, they go down there into the neighborhood to pay their bill.
In this scenario, there would be basically three different zones. You'd have the public zone, which is essentially just the parking lot. So there'd be fencing around the parking lot on the left side where that blue building is, free now. On where the, the new building would be on the right hand side, there'd be a fence going over towards the training area. And then the training area itself would be.
So I can get out my, I can get out my car and walk into that pond.
Now, would that still be necessary if we didn't have public access?
So if you do.
Or would just the gate, the front fence with a gate be enough?
So if you say, we're not gonna have any public area at all, zero public.
Right. You'd still have that fence?
You'd still have to have a paved parking lot to some extent to, to account for your minimum ADA.
Right, I agree.
Right.
We would want to have a fenced in public area because we're still gonna take recyclables, we're still gonna take E-waste, we're still gonna take mattresses.
So you'd be allowing people past that point then?
So most likely, we would still have a scenario where you have a parking lot that's, that's fenced in. And then you'd have a fire training area that's fenced in so that it'd prevent fire training from coming in.
Right, would the recycling, would the recycling be in that public parking area?
Right now, it opens into the parking area. So they would be able to drive their car in to the front of the recycling area, unload whatever they're unloading.
And that would remain that way?
That would be the intent.
Well, is that what it's going to be or not, what's the plan?
Well, nothing's set, so I'm just.
Where are you gonna put that stuff? Okay.
So, so essentially what we would have is if there's no, if there's no offices or offices where somebody's paying a bill. If that's, if that's off the table, then we would have a slightly smaller parking lot. But in previous conversations, it was the interest of the board to have a dump station for RVs. Is that still something that you guys would like?
Yes, it depends on what, what the cost comes with it.
I don't know.
The cost to put it in is next to the.
Because, because really, I mean, I think it's a great idea, but.
So then you have to have a space for people to come in.
So we're gonna have Class A and then Class A vehicles rumbling through the neighborhood?
Well, like we're going, because of the, the revenue potential, we're taking and going to take, uh, septic waste from pockets. It's a minimal cost to us, but it is a revenue generator for us. They, well, from like septic tank pumping.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I didn't understand what you said, I'm sorry.
And in those, those vehicles, the larger ones would go down the, the in-street access. So like I said a while ago, we know when they're coming, they can't just show up. So they, we know when they're coming, so they could come around the back and stay out of the neighborhood, that's not a big deal.
Who's that?
The septic haulers or the back trucks or whoever.
RVs, RVs would not.
Well, the RVs would have to go down.
Something like North County septic back trucks.
Yeah, we're talking about commercial vehicles would go down the access.
Okay.
The private vehicles and RV whatever would come down the street. If you guys don't wanna do that, then that's fine, we can get that off the pond.
What's the revenue potential for RV dumping?
Um, most places it's pretty minimal, it's, it's more of a courtesy, I think.
We're not a campground?
Yeah, we're not a campground, I mean, it's, I think the city of Tascadero.
I don't know, sort of, huh?
I think they charge like ten dollars to dump an RV.
Gotta get out of.
And it probably costs less than a dollar to, to build it.
What do you get for a back truck, what if you had like a two thousand gallons?
The back trucks are different, that's, that's like ten cents a gallon based on the volume.
Is that a comment or question?
Three or four hundred dollars a truck.
Yeah, in regards to taking payments in town, could we see if maybe the post office could take payments for those five years that we're waiting for?
I'm sure they couldn't. I don't think they'd be so crowded, it was in there complaining today, they had no room. I mean, I don't, I don't think that people, it's a post office, I don't think that.
That, that's something, you know, we really need to maybe stop looking at what does the district itself or what the community government services need. And maybe work on partnering, cause a lot of us don't have enough money to build our own darn building in this community, we don't. But literally, if everyone actually got together and for one building, we could build something really frickin' nice in this town. The only question is though, what does this community really need, what does this district need, and what do we really want? You know, that's the way how they do it now in these other communities. They, they, everyone sits together, these different departments, different organizations, and say, hey, let's work together, let's build one thing and we'll all save money.
Well, fortunately here, we don't have a whole lot of organizations, the other organizations here have virtually zero.
And some of them though are interested in renting possibly from the district, office space, you know? Or the fact though, because they're nonprofits and are different sections of nonprofits, we can't, we get grant funding for. Including stuff that's an identified community design plan as county's supposed to allocate grant funding for. So there's money out there, we literally just gotta sit down with these people and start talking about it.
I, I, I can't understand why everybody's making a big deal about paying your bill. I get my bill. I write a check.
Put it in the mail.
Put it in the mail. Even though there's a drop box right here, I drop it off at the post office. And so what, what is the big deal about where to pay your bill?
You know?
I mean, I, I understand, it should be in town, like where it's at right now is perfect. Perfect area. But I mean, how many, how many door hangers are you hanging them up because you're not getting paid?
They've had up to thirty people in a day pay a bill.
Yeah, they, they.
And I don't know why.
Yeah, because there, there's a slot right there at the door, they don't even have to come in, you know?
Well, that, I would hope that that would remain.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I.
I mean.
If we could do this without taking, without taking public, you know, without taking the traffic. Stop taking cash, go to the post office, buy a cashier's check, postal money order, put it in the box, that's how you pay your bill.
Yeah, but it's simple.
Only costs a dollar.
Yeah.
That'll be a real change.
It doesn't, but doesn't, the people that do that don't care how much it costs to pay the, pay for a, for a money.
Whenever you're like.
People that do this, they don't care, they pay the fifteen dollars for a door opener, they don't care, they do it every month, they don't care.
It's true, yeah.
So let's just stop taking cash.
Yeah, exactly, there, there's a lot of bills.
It's a good solution.
That, you know, I'm sure everybody gets a bill every now and then to pay your mortgage or something, do not send cash. It's written right on the bill.
Right.
Either a check, money order, or, or what?
Your comment?
Yeah, I think really the whole topic here is going, to me is going back to the fact that suddenly we had a sewer emergency. That had to be dealt with. And we didn't have a district plan for what the need was. And so the sewer project has been able to move forward. And in the meantime, the other needs within this district have been overlooked. And, and I'm not, you know, I mean, that's just the way it happens when you get, um, something like this that you have to do evidently. Um, although I, I've never seen a letter that said you have to do it by this date, and if you don't, here's the consequences. We just assume there are heavy consequences. But the problem is the board, in all the years I'm remembering, has never come up with a plan. In terms of what they envision as being needed for all the different divisions of the CSD. And what, as Anthony said, might be the other possibilities to expand. So it's kind of like this is an emergency thing to be done. Um, and so it's easy to make bad decisions when that's the case.
We could remedy a lot of that with a district master plan, but when you deal with engineering and authora, authoring the, the document. That's fifty grand to start.
Right, but, but that doesn't preclude a board from making their own decisions.
Right. Of course not, yeah.
And, and I understand, I mean, I've been here and seen it, there are so many issues the board has to deal with. Uh, the whole district over time, it's hard to find the time for all those things. But I think the important piece right now, rather than what that's looking like, is for the board to decide what. Which of those pieces really need to be, uh, where? And as a temporary measure, you know, as Kelly was previously talking about here. That could be a workable solution as a temporary fix. If you look at it as a temporary for, um, working out something different with the facilities. That would be a separate fire station and maybe some other, um, site, as John mentioned, maybe lots of things. But you can't just keep throwing them out without coming to some decision as a group, cause you're just spinning your wheels. You're not making a decision.
One thing on, on, here, this area, and one thing that brought a lot of growth in is they built three prisons in close proximity. There are a lot of correctional officers actually live here, um, all the communities did. And any organization that's fairly big can be proactive or reactive. And for us, without that plan, this district has primarily been reactive. And so they built something to fit a need rather than building something to facilitate an operation. And so you always meet the minimum to meet that need and then you're stuck with it, but that need's always changing. Where this building has been here almost twenty years.
But this was proactive.
Yeah, it was, and it was, it was, uh, they, they came in and saw that they were moving around town, trying to find the cheapest places to live and. They had the old firehouse that could hardly house anything, and so they decided, you know, we can't be reactive, we've gotta go out and build something, and they did. But immediately, they said, let's put in a CSD, let's start doing these things. And now with the development here, look how much it's grown. And the growth that we've seen so far, just what we're seeing potentially, and I'm very sure very soon. What would you say, at least one third or half the size of this town could expand?
A lot of projects.
You got the terrace, you got the airport, you got cemetery, or just things that are in the air talking about. And those projects alone are gonna almost double the residential size of this whole community. And so all I'm saying is, is that instead of just being reactive and meeting our current need, is we need to go back to be proactive like they did. Plan out where we wanna be in twenty years and count, like that sheriff's substation and a community that needs a room bigger than this to meet in and. You're gonna need more utility service areas because that department, all those are gonna grow. You add twice the homes we have now, that's obviously gonna grow. And same thing with our fire department, um. Down the road in the immediate need, this was the cheapest affordable option, and it's a pretty good idea. Developing here is more expensive, but there are some things we can do here, how long is that gonna sustain us? And then looking down the road where, where, once we start talking about this, I mean, they built this station, the CSD jumped in on it. We start building and you're gonna get the sheriff's department, you're gonna get a chamber of congress and, uh, advisory committee, everybody want to.
Use.
Yeah, so if it's possible, start kinda thinking a little bigger and, and what we can do to accommodate more of that.
Have we, have we heard any, I know John Sean was here at the last meeting, but have we heard anything about that property over there? Is there, is there any ray of hope, or is that just like totally up in smoke?
I think we're getting kind of smoked now because it's still listed under the affordable housing property for, on the county side of it, it's still listed down?
It's not, it's not listed under the affordable housing, it's a multifamily.
Multi-familia.
And the county is looking at it in the sense that that is affordable housing.
Avenue units right there.
And they are already behind, so they're, the last, last thing that came across was they were investigating with their attorneys. Whether or not they could even sell it to us and take it out of the affordable, or the multifamily.
And that would be fair market value.
Well, that answers my question, I'm right there.
Mister, I wanna say thank you for saying that, cause I really do think we need to be very proactive because.
Well, that's what we all said, it, we know that.
Do you see this, this is our fate if we aren't, if we aren't proactive. This is the pastoral city budget, they think the mission belongs to the city of Paso, that should not be in that budget for the city of Paso. This is the city of Paso's budget, this is on page nineteen of the budget, they're a community profile, they talk about the beautiful mission of San Miguel as part of the community of Paso.
Well, that's because it's not the city of San Miguel.
Exactly, but the, or what we're doing, so we really need to just figure out being proactive, otherwise we're gonna be, you know.
Right. Are you calling on their budget, does they have money for us?
Right, that'd be nice, but no, seriously, that's what they think of us, and I just.
So, so I guess where we're at is kind of a, kind of a crossroad, I guess. So we do have to move forward with the treatment plan, we all understand that. The, like I mentioned in the beginning, that some of those space, that space is necessary to have people at the treatment plant and to facilitate. You know, proper compliance with all the state laws, state federal laws as far as employees.
Can I, can I ask, why would we need two bathrooms for that many people?
So we could eliminate one bathroom.
Let's do it, cause that's a huge expense.
So.
And you, for, for ten people, you don't need two bathrooms.
So there's two bathrooms for the meeting room, so if the meeting room is smaller.
I'm sorry?
You have the meeting room.
It's the conference room that I think's here now.
Yeah, so we could, we could have two bathrooms.
There's still not ten people here.
Well, if you have a nice new one, you'll have lots of people.
Okay, but we have lots of people here, we only have one bathroom here, it's worked out.
And.
I mean, it's a way, it's a way to cut back on the cost.
Is it for when you have classes?
This room right here?
That's not.
If this, if this has to be rebuilt.
For the.
Yeah, when you have classes in the.
If this has to be rebuilt for living space, let's rebuild it and meet the needs of that where we can modify it later. Use it as a conference room now and change it over to living space, but build it to the, to the.
We feel like the bottom section is very difficult, you open the walls and you can replace just two walls. It's when you go to the second level and you have all the egress issues and, and things about that, that makes it very complicated.
We can understand that, but we can, we can address all of that at the same time and piecemeal it, just like we're going to, but do it appropriately.
It wasn't a piecemeal, it's just to make it stop and, and, and make it look presentable, so there wasn't a question base that was my intention. If we're talking intents.
Well, there's more question.
Well, now the other part of it is not to meet a need and put a Band-Aid on something. I mean, if you're going to build this, it gets built out to be what it's gonna be twenty years from now.
So.
So, but.
I don't know if that's a Band-Aid though, is it?
That's not a Band-Aid.
That's not a Band-Aid.
No, if you build something here and try to use it for something else.
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah. I don't have a lot of problems with this, I just, I wanna control the cost on it, that's all I wanna do, and I want, I don't want. The public going there to make payments and having the possibility of thirty people driving down that street in a day. I just don't think that's right to the people that live there. Does anybody disagree with that?
I don't disagree at all.
You disagree with it?
Well, I mean, it's a, it's a neighborhood and.
Right, it's a cul-de-sac.
And you change that neighborhood, so it, well, that's not a cul-de-sac, the end of the street is a cul-de-sac. The, that's a first street.
Once you commit to the last cross street, you're in a cul-de-sac, doesn't matter if it bends or not, it's a cul-de-sac. If it doesn't have an outlet, it's a cul-de-sac.
I understand that, John. The, the point is, is we need to do what's best for the community, and that means.
These people are part of this community.
I understand that, but, you know, we have to do what's best for them financially, long term, short term, everywhere in between.
Perhaps we should have tried a little bit outreach to those people and see how they feel.
That would, so, if, so I guess, I guess we're to a point where we need, or I need, direction on what you would like to do. If you guys, if all four of you say, you know what, we do not want any public there at all, then the picture's gonna be quite a bit different. Because as a supervisor, I wouldn't want, you know, have one person way out of outpost somewhere and then be all the way across town and not be able to support them.
If I had a choice, I'd, I'd eliminate public access.
I understand what John said, but let, let me just point out this fact, okay? The fact of the matter is that that facility is gonna be staffed with a greater number of individuals than we would have here. Cause you're gonna have utilities, right, you're gonna have utility staff, if we move the offices area, office staff, which may come and go. So I know we're talking about no public access, but just by expanding this, and if we were to move the offices there, there's already gonna be more traffic. The six point four individuals on a daily basis, I don't think are gonna be a huge contributor other than what we're already doing anyway.
On some days, there's thirty.
I understand.
On one day in the last four months.
No, but that's thirty cars, that's sixty trips past a person's house.
Okay, well, I, I understand that, I'm sympathetic to that. I mean, I used to live on the corner of Devil Street, so I'm, I'm sympathetic to that neighborhood.
I just, I just, I don't believe that people bought a house back in there thinking that that could ever happen.
Maybe we should ask them.
I think we should, I think that's a great idea.
Well, it's all gonna, it's all gonna be brought to their homeowner association anyway.
Good.
Because it has an effect on the community or on their, their little micro-community.
Right.
And they get to have a say, like, they don't really need to have a say, but they're gonna get to have a say because we want to be good neighbors.
Have we, have we called anybody, or have we written a letter to anybody, or saying, hey?
We haven't reached out to them to that extent yet because we're waiting to see whether or not we're even doing that.
I see.
So the, the extent of our impact on their lives.
Well, if we were, if we were to decide to build this, is what they say gonna bring into a grinding hall? I mean, cause it seems like either, I mean.
So, I mean, if, if all, I think there's sixty, no, there's more than sixty, the hundred houses there?
Something like that.
Hundred forty houses in Mission Meadows.
So there's a hundred forty houses in Mission Meadows, not all of them are affected by that, there's only, there's three intersections, so eight houses or nine, no, ten houses.
Unfortunately, those would be on Mission Meadows.
Well, I'm also, another concern I have is that we've got the gallow influence. And we got backyards there. And I mean, I know that's gonna happen regardless, but wine influence, I think we all know what that smells like from time to time.
Well, it's, uh, it's already processed, it's processed.
So it's pre, it's pretreated, but you still have a tank of stuff waiting to, you know, that will be aerated as well.
So, so what, what would you guys like to see? Could I, I can bring it back as a scaled down picture of what it's gonna be, that's the question.
I, I think, yeah.
I just, I just have a question, we keep going back and forth about the, the public going down there, so if the public's not going down there. Then that eliminates the need for a conference room, meeting room, but can the facility function without a meeting room at all? Because.
They need to have.
If you're looking at the, I think the total is, it's eight hundred ninety-six, just under a thousand square feet for the meeting room, but if you sectioned it off. You'd be taking away five hundred eighty-seven square feet, or you would have a big void, or your building would be in odd shape. So I, I think the only way that you'd be able to do that is to stop it at grid line six.
It would be reorganized if we were to take out those spaces, so the, so the.
So it has to have some component of a, of a meeting.
Yeah, it has to have some sort of conference room. The, so the basic facts of where we're at now.
And it has to have that for the fire department?
No, for staff meetings, for, um.
Okay, but you need a space smaller than this.
So if you look at that where the green sticker is on the bottom, if there was no other administrative staff there, then a little space on the bottom.
That would be your conference room.
Would be the conference room space.
And what's the dimensions of that?
Three hundred sixty-four square feet, I can't see it from there, I gotta watch here.
Fifteen by twenty-four, so it's slightly smaller than this space.
So, but the entire space goes all the way to the top of that?
Well, the, the building would have to be reorganized.
No, I mean, the way it is, the whole conference room.
I was talking about right here would be there.
That would be the necessity.
Now extends to right here, this can be opened where this is one big room or closed where you have a room inside.
Overable.
So the proposed conference room is actually bigger than just the green area.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and.
And if you redesigned it, you wouldn't have a fourth.
Okay, and part of my question, um, that I had tonight is, in those green sections. How is the money going to be distributed or would it be in terms of. Departments that are contributing to the cost of that, those sections? In other words, is, uh, I would assume, I guess, well, yeah, I would guess that, uh, sewer. Nothing from sewer would come out of that part, but it would come out of water and lighting and solid waste? Is that it?
So theoretically that those joint spaces would be paid into by all the departments, so you would be.
Including fire.
Including the fire department, because the general manager and the bookkeeper both pay or both use that position to. Including the fire department, because the general manager and the bookkeeper both pay or both use that position to, uh, do operations.
Really concerns me because I have felt for years that the fire department has gotten within the shorts here with owning this building. CSD using it and expecting maintenance, all that stuff to be the fire department's responsibility. And that again, I feel like, okay, so again, fire department is not really getting, um, a fair shake. Cause they have to have their own building for the fire trucks and all of that. And if they move the bookkeeper and, um, it's really only the bookkeeper that deals with that. And the manager has to be down there at least part of the time, then that has.
The general manager would be there most of the time, I think.
Well, in the current situation, you have a combination and the fire chief would be down here. Presumably at least half of the time.
Yeah.
That would be, that would be the hopes.
Yeah.
So.
So again, it adds more, actually it adds more expense for the fire department doing it that way. And I understand that and I think that that's a reasonable proposal. I just, in terms of the expense, I'm very sensitive about the fire department because of what I've seen.
You, you don't think the fire department should be paying into any part of this building? And in theory, really, they shouldn't be. Other than, other than there's a, an administrative cost to the general manager.
Right.
And there's administrative costs to the accounting.
What percentages are we talking for each division?
We, we would also have that.
Well, forty percent of the, of general manager's, no, not forty percent.
Well, twenty, the general's, or the general's split right now is twenty percent.
Twenty percent.
But would you, would you apply that to the construction of this building when most of its purpose for being there is wastewater?
So that would, that would have to be.
That's gonna skew the percentages.
That would have to be determined when and if we include any of those spaces in there. So if there's only really two, two spaces that are realistically tied to the general manager and accounting, which is also used by the fire department.
Square footage.
Then those two spaces would presumably, the cost of those spaces would be partially afforded by.
So it's just X dollars per square foot, it'll be that percentage or.
So, yeah, the fire department's not using the accounts manager, which, I mean, they use her as an administrative person, not as an accountant's manager. Then they wouldn't be paying into that space. They're not gonna be paying into the billing, receiving of the space. If we build, built a meeting room, conference room that was for board meetings, then the fire department would pay into that.
It, it could even be done on an hourly rate. You know, when they use, when, when the accounting.
When they use.
What does the siphon checks? They build that type of fire room. It would be done that simply.
How much is the CSD of fire? You know, there's one thing that you're not really considering, it's probably very minor, but the valid point was, there is a power of lighting. And there's no representation for space for somebody to manage lighting. In addition to lighting, you're gonna take on the landscaping. So I don't know if it's gonna require extra staff or if Kale's just gonna handle that burden on his own.
You know?
For those extra things, but that is gonna grow as the, as the road improvements grow in front.
Oh, I would certainly hope not.
But there's gonna be something. There's gonna be more lights. There's gonna be, you know.